How is this feeling?
Yellow light three.
Yellow bus plus?
Yellow light three.
Head started and we're live now.
Thank you everyone.
You're welcome.
Long, long trip once again.
Wow, I'm used to retire.
Nicely that's come down.
In one, in two side. Um, we just finished.
Sorry? Oh no, I'm good, thanks sir.
Live, yeah, it's live.
I'm going to France, yeah. Yes, thank you everyone, be careful. We're now in Australia, Brisbane to be specific and um, yeah, take it back with my people here. Full house.
A A C.
Take it back.
Bring it back.
Action! Here we go, start for show already. Go, go, go!
Nice, thank you so much everyone, thank you all, my friends and wherever it might be. It's about what time now, seven AM or whatever. Yeah. It's the end of the world man. Careful, careful. We don't know yet, but just to hope that they're fine. They've seen through a bad, have a trial. Traveling and event, come on. You know, this fake British they have.
The car is stuck on the other side of the rail, the car is still in there.
Can I finish it?
Maybe take things off.
Obviously. Well, I probably have a, we're live now. No, no worries, it's fine. I just wanna follow us and see the beautiful streets of Brisbane. And uh, someone really, really. Guys, I don't think I care, I want to then take it back sir.
A A C! A A C!
Take it back, wow, I see all our African people here. Thank you everyone, so in Brisbane, if you're in Brisbane, we have a time of meeting to, to see you alright this afternoon. What time is it?
Five thirty.
Five thirty PM, so those of you who have been doubting that I would come here. I'm here on the ground now, so let me show them myself, even though I look uh, a little tired. Fine, pretty much for three days. Wow, yes, I left Lagos on um, on Monday night, I had it still Tuesday Nigeria.
It's still Wednesday morning, uh, Christmas, in Brisbane, in Australia, so.
So, it's good to see you guys and if you can, it's been home to, a town home today. Yeah. Springwood Hotel is where it is.
Yeah, Springwood Hotel?
Yeah, Springwood Hotel in Brisbane as well, please. Uh, and that's my town home today at five thirty, uh, so. Quite a lot of people already joined us, and here. It's a lovely family here, people are here, nice, and it's, yeah. And this is a lovely city of Brisbane. I know how you guys feel, you look at the roads and like you're crossing out our leaders. These are the easiest things to do. I was reading somewhere today, uh, there's a, an infographic on the, on the, on the current president of India, the prime minister of India.
Prime Minister.
What he has done in four years. Right, there used to be some villages without electricity, there's no villages, or there are no villages left without electricity, that got four years, in India.
So many that four years is a long.
Four years is often be a lot of things, so somebody said that the audio is very low.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry people, yeah, I just, no, I think it's my audio, uh, can you hear me? So this is Brisbane North, where we are at now, yes, so where are we going to South?
We're going to the South.
Yes, so the event will happen, and somebody's asking already, says is this Brisbane North or South?
We're in South, but the event is happening in South, Springwood Hotel, Springwood in the South.
In the South, so yeah, so the event is happening in the South, right, it is not right now, uh.
Driving towards the South.
We are driving towards the South in Brisbane, so this is uh, I'd like to make it, helping you guys and travel with us. And you can see how people get things done elsewhere. One way in Nigeria is chaos, you know, terrible roads, traffic, lights, no work, when you're walking, nobody respects them, it's a country of uh. No listening and disorder, but it's possible to change all of that, so volume is better, okay? I wonder, maybe, it's because there's a regular people out there who are always looking out for us. Uh. Yeah, the positions are still in your future, these are simple things that you find here, nice roads, like you know, things are working. Electricity, everything you take for granted in Nigeria is uh, they, they, things we take seriously in Nigeria, they take for granted over here, yeah.
They need information about power, they need information about.
This guy don't think about electricity anymore.
They're thinking about, thinking like, that's the next thing they want.
Yes, maybe they have made Wi-Fi at the open up and everything, right, yeah. And we're still like.
It's a struggle.
It's a struggle with how to get Nepa to just give us life for hours, but uh, doesn't happen. And the people who made it impossible for us to get Nepa, we are, some young people are dying to bring them back to power.
Yeah.
Or to retain them in power, you know, so, it's uh, it's very sad, but uh. We'll keep letting you see how this is working and how fast it works, you know, how it is easy, you know, for people to live a good life. And how it is possible for you to live a better life than you have now. But in four years, I do get a lot of things that are accomplished in Nigeria. You can retire all the cabals. See, somebody say it's a revolution, a revolutionary, that that people too taught, you know? To value seconds, we're going to win, we're gonna win. Sorry. Back, yes, yes, we're taking it back, now taking it back, yes. All our people here would love to come home.
Take like you have back.
Yes. Love that guy, back, he is full of life, and a great supporter, yeah.
You don't go to school today, what happened, why you don't go to school today? You're a school supporter.
He just said, you know, you are skipping class for us, this one day, don't let your principal find out. And look at the train. This is like, was.
Transit train.
Okay.
Because we didn't see it. Tram was giving, different subways here.
Hello, buddy.
Yes, we are live, we are live now, say hello to all of our people, all over the place. They're watching us live, driving through the city of Brisbane, yes. Yes. Yeah, thank you so much for bringing us and uh, we're having a good time already so far, so well, in Brisbane.
Yes, they are very good help, yes, thank you for coming around, and uh, Ophelia will take care of the, we are fit very well.
Yes.
And they have a colleague behind you.
Thank you so much, see you soon, uh.
Yeah, see you, love you.
Take it back, yes.
Take it back.
Action, yes, thank you so much.
Alright, okay.
Thank you, see you soon.
O K B, we'll see you tomorrow, happy only Friday.
Yes, 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 don't worry, yes.
I think I'll just call my boss, I'll just.
Let your boss know that, but maybe your boss is watching this.
I told him I'm coming late, but I just, I'll call him, I just said that, it's no point.
Your boss should get to Nigeria one day to, to.
Are we?
Let us walk towards our independence, true independence.
Yeah, call my phone so that you can speak to all of us.
I'll just drop police in school.
Okay. It's good, you know? I wish.
We will have opportunities, but it's getting one award.
Oh, fantastic, that would be great.
In the evening.
Okay, we can go there, yeah. Now we can stream it live as well, okay, yeah.
Hello?
Good morning, brother, morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to Australia, Mr. Owoe.
Well, thank you so much, thank you for bringing us, uh, we're here in uh, Brisbane and uh. Just driving tra, through your township, I mean your city here, beautiful city. Thank you, thank you so much for bringing us.
We are so delighted to have you, we've been waiting for you.
Oh, that's Chris.
Yes, I'm excited also to be here, and I can't wait to see everyone, can't wait to be in all of the cities uh, here. We're doing four cities, uh, this is a four city tour. We're doing uh, Brisbane and then from here we're going to, I think uh.
South.
South, yeah, and then uh, ultimately we'll be in Perth uh, before we leave next week. Thank you so much for bringing us, uh.
Oh, thank you so much for taking your time because you are making history, because you are the first in the history of Nigeria to really talking to Nigeria, traveling across the states.
Probably the first presidential candidate to visit uh, Australia.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I think you are the first presidential candidate to.
To visit Australia, yes.
Yes, Australia, that's history.
I've not heard anybody do that before, you know, yes. So we are, we are calling school now, this one looks better than our university. Better than the university of Lagos, we are, you call it, have a nice day man.
A A C!
Take it back. So we just dropped off college at school, you know?
Yeah, but, but it's a long day and a little bit of, some jet lag, quite time to rest.
Yeah, I'm going to the hotel to rest now and then later on in the evening we'll be at uh, the town hall meeting in Brisbane, so if you're in Brisbane and you're watching. Uh, oh, you're in Brisbane, yes, I'm, I'm calling on order as well in Brisbane too. Uh, please join us tonight, uh, five thirty PM, south, southern part of Brisbane, for our town hall meeting, yes.
Yes, please, um, rest well because it's gonna be a long evening.
Don't worry, you know, we are, we are built for this, don't worry.
You are, you're very strong man.
I give you.
I, 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 the project, it may be a long project, I'm happy that you are unlocking the mind of the African Nigerian youth, I like the project.
It is happy.
Your mentality, the way they see their future.
They are, and they are fighting right now, they are fighting very hard on social media to tell the story and to change the narrative. I'm really happy and pleased about that, a lot of young people are questioning why they should continue to vote for the people that have failed them for fifty eight years. It's never happened before, then they are discussing alternative, but we have a, we have a hash, a hashtag that says we, we have better alternatives. Uh, than the two old, corrupt, tired and sick leaders that are trying to return back to power. You know, when you ask them what they are bringing, they, they have nothing to tell you, other than to claim that it is in the time of their zone and it's the time of the ethnic group, you know, as if. As if they have helped even their own ethnic people.
Yes, and, and one thing, one thing, by the course of what we expect from your government is to bring history back to Nigeria. One thing about uh, the Nigeria, uh, uh, they don't know about history.
They don't teach us history, yeah.
If you know about history, you don't vote for a few people in power today, because they don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
You could read it on the piece on newspaper, but it doesn't tell you the detail of people who like, so you saw this.
That's right.
They are still powerful, so, bringing history back to Nigeria, honestly, it's gonna be force and danger, so that from primary school to university, history is compulsory.
Yeah.
People need to learn about their history, their past, their present and their future, because a man that doesn't know history, has no future.
Hmm.
So we have to bring history back.
Wow, that's, that's so deep, yes, we are bringing back history and what we are doing now is also history. As I say, journalism uh, or social media is capturing history in a hurry.
Yeah, yeah.
This is also going to be part of history, and nobody will forget this time in the history of Nigeria where. People of Nigeria rose up all over the world to say that enough is enough, and they want to change the course of history.
Yeah.
And we, they have no option, they have to give way, you know, whether they like it or not, we're taking it back and there's no looking back.
Yes, so my question, there's something I was really keen to talk to you about, it's about the, this town hall meeting. It's really powerful, because at the end of the day, the war is gonna be the war between money and the power of information.
Of uh, information and ideas as well, yes, yes, yes.
For the youth, honestly, the man of the youth is getting unlocked now.
Yes.
But I suggest that in every local government, there is this military, that's military meeting going on, and it will be live. People will be talking about the idea of this high side heat, which is your, your program, the agenda in government, so. There would be a hot debate among the youth, and at least once in a month, we have two months to the election now. Or at least two times in a month, there is debate in every town hall meeting, every local government, that will be checked by the head of that person.
Yes.
In that local government, so, there would be, it would be live, if, if it's already going on, it's not popular, because we haven't seen that, not only you are in every village or any local town, we don't see this. But you can't be everywhere, so this time, because at the end of the day, there's gonna be a, a war within power of information and money, so you, we don't have the money, but we have the power of information.
That's right. And power of ideas, yeah, yeah.
The ones that will not invite, every person from every voice of life, from perpetrator to Provence, to our community, in every local government, where there will be a debate on security, on economy, on social welfare, on um, everything.
Education, health, yes.
And, and the debate will be open for everybody, and if a wrong with, um, from the local language, can use a local language to run it, whatever they have to do, at least the people that people are following.
Yes.
People can call the boot, mechanic can call the boot, carpenter can call the boot, education, permission can call the boot, so, that has to be going on, because. What the Nigerian really needs is unlock their mind, for them to understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
The future is also there, the debate is what, yeah.
I comply, I agree, yeah.
Exactly, so, it, it, it's, it's about someone who has a philosophy, look, this is my future, I have to vote and wait until the vote is counted. I have to ensure that my vote is counted, so it's not about enlightenment, it's not about knowing your future, that this coincides my life.
Yeah.
It coincides, so, that is the issue with the African Nigerian youth, they don't really know, sometimes they're not enlightened enough to know.
Wow, that's a tear.
What you are doing is unlocking their mind.
Yes.
Okay, so, that has to be bad, they will find town hall meeting at least two times every month, that should be going on across every local government in Nigeria.
Yes.
That is it, and if that is going on, I tell you the truth, you are going to capture the most important mind of the youth, and they are going to really know. They are sometimes with me, oh, we know, we know where to vote, we know, but they don't really know, they don't, they are not enlightened enough to know that that is your future, this is your life. And that is why this, this whole western nation is different, enlightenment, they don't understand that, if you talk to an electrician in Australia, you will not know difference between electrician and, and electrical engineer, not different.
Yeah.
They have information enough, only there, there is a bigger between electrician and electrical engineer, a very bigger.
You heard that the minister of health said that his tailor is a doctor, so they have turned all the professionals into, you know, into carpenters and, you know, they've destroyed the country, they've destroyed. Everything this guy's touched, they destroyed, and uh, it's very important what you're saying, that uh.
Yes.
When people are sufficiently educated and knowledgeable about what they are doing, there's will be little gap between, you know, people who are skilled professionals or academic professionals. You know, at the end of the day, it is a professor in the US that teaches somebody how to be a carpenter.
True.
You know, because it is the reason why I disagree with our friend when he said he wants to create skill acquisition center, what is the meaning of skill acquisition centers?
We need to have community colleges in places where we don't have universities, where people within two years can pick up an, you know, an associate degree on account, in accounting.
Yeah.
Even in legal services, or any other profession, even carpentry, barbing, all those things that in the US you cannot cut somebody's hair without a license.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm sure it's the same thing here.
Same, yeah, yeah.
But in Nigeria, you can just wake up one day and go and sew a gown to be a lawyer, and go to court, and the magistrate will not even ask you where, where you went to law school.
Yeah, yeah.
There are a lot of them like that, this is the reason why the country, and it's the same problem we are having, we have a lot of very uneducated people. Who are barely literate, who claim to be experts and professional, I meet them all the time on TV, and when you challenge them, they get upset, because they can't defend their oppositions.
Yes, 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 so, on another note, prison supposed to be a correction center, but the Nigerian prison is a destruction center, so there would be a solid skill acquisition center in the prison.
Yeah.
Why for it, which one, not the one, David, not the one.
In, in the US you can obtain a degree from prison.
People have done that, yeah, many times before.
It's not, it's not, it's not that, it's not knowledge base, it's not going to be skill acquisition center alone, people who want to continue their life in a way that is progressive, in a way that when they return back to society, they can. Be completely reformed and they can assist society, we'll be giving the option to do that, but with the corruption as I've been found, what is terrible about prison system is that most of the people in prison. Are people who are waiting trial, people are not supposed to be in prison, whereas people who are supposed to be in prison are the ones governing the country. You know, criminals, yeah, is uh, is, is insane, is, is, is insane, but uh, thank you so much uh, for this enlight, I think when I, when I uh. When I activate my phone, we'll make it public, so that people can be calling us whilst we are driving. We can be having this robust engagement from all over the world, yes, I, I really like it, I think it connects to uh, the speaker of the car.
Yeah.
People can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, thank you for calling me, we're so sorry that it's a long turn out, are you welcome, are you welcome today?
No, no, that's, that's fine, as long as I can find Nigerian food, I can sleep a little bit, I have no problem.
Okay, thanks Chris.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Chris.
Please, I just want to have a good rest, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll rest, I'll rest, I'll rest.
Thank you.
Alright, talk to you later, bye bye.
I told you, dude, that he will prefer Nigerian food.
No.
I, I'm Nigerian by heart, everything about me is Nigerian man, I could, I can do without anything, but I can't do without Nigerian food, whatever I find myself. If they go and look at my Google searches, anywhere I travel to, the first thing I search for is Nigerian restaurant.
It's the same, I mean, when we go here, to when you travel back from Nigeria, you want to eat either swallow, either a cow or something.
Yes, swallow something, yeah, sometimes I don't even like swallow, I just want to drink soup, you know, good soup, yeah. Because nobody in the world cooks the way we cook.
No, no, and that's why I told my wife, this minister for, what was it, that was when they asked him, uh, who's the best, who makes the best jollof rice?
Yeah, oh, misinformation, yeah, live Mohammed.
Yeah, what are you saying?
They don't know any better.
You say Senegalese make better jollof rice.
They don't know any better, they demarkets the country by their share, by their ignorance, sometimes, that's all they know, they don't know any better, you know, it. The, the, what Bahari says is what he knows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I heard the other day, he told that Nigerians who are tired of Nigeria should move to, I don't think, they are free to live.
That was boring.
Does that, yeah, so, how does that, you know, how do you say that president of a country telling their citizens they are free to live? Does that, yeah, is that, how does that, you know, how do you say that president of a country telling their citizens they are free to live? You know? Live to where?
Exactly. To where? Where are they gonna go to?
Where to go to, you know?
Ghana.
Well, you should be creating a condition for people to return home, to bring back the skills and the investment that they want to bring.
I think he's lost it.
No, the man is, the man is out of, he's, he's out of his senses.
The other day, I watched, I, my son and my wife watched a clip, uh, and Intevia was asking him a question.
And he went in a different direction.
Yeah, yeah.
His answer was different from the question.
And then Intevia was even trying to explain to him the meaning of the English, because I don't think he understood the English drama. So the guy was whispering in his ear, he's, and then he said, oh, and he didn't even answer the question, he.
He's, he does that, that's why they shield him from debates and, uh, because they know he will fail miserably, you know. Everything that is not written down and practiced over time, they can't answer. And most of the things they are saying are the same thing ever since, since nineteen eighty three.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
I don't know how.
Someone is saying that the man is senile and has dementia. I don't, I don't, I have no doubt that he does. I have no doubt, honestly. So we're in a tunnel. Look at this tunnel here, it's, uh, it's amazing. How long is the tunnel?
Uh, I think this is roughly about five kilometers.
Five kilometers? Wow. Imagine a five kilometer tunnel in Lagos, it will run through the city.
It will save a lot of.
Yeah, it saves a lot of time.
This one is under, it's on down water. At some stage you are gonna go underwater.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh, it's unbelievable.
This is on down water. When there's a depression, and then we are going on that, they see, on that riverbed.
Okay.
So there will be a depression.
You feel it?
Yeah, you see the depression. It's not quite.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. So where we are going to now, we are rightly on the bed of the water.
Wow.
At that point, where there's a depression.
I hope you guys can see, this is a tunnel, you know, uh. Yeah. This is a tunnel and, uh, you just need two of these and Lagos traffic will be resolved by, you know, maybe some twenty percent right away there and then you add that to train.
Train services.
Train services. You need to have a train come from Badagri to Ojota or even beyond there. And then you have another one going from Lagos, I land to Ota. To resolve issue that our train is the worst. They have, uh.
Queensland is, uh, slightly bigger than Nigeria, the whole state.
The whole state of Queensland is bigger than Nigeria.
Slightly bigger.
That's what I told them.
If you see these infrastructures.
Yeah, it is in the state itself, yeah.
I just said to my, all we need to do is replicate, not replicate, even, even, let's even copy, let's even copy what they're doing.
Just come and copy it. And I'm sure you can find it on Google.
Oh, yeah, you can.
You can find the plan of.
You can find it.
Hit thumbs up in the chat for Sorre.
Yeah, thank you, man. Got a great supporter here, man. This guy is. The only advantage of flying this one is, remember it, at least, you will not feel it too much, you know, it's.
All the passengers, yeah.
They decide you, almost only time. They ask you what you want, how you feeling, and it seems like you deliberate the flights to ensure that you have the most convenient flights. It's amazing, yeah, everything.
About what was standing out from here, I, I, I.
Yeah, we did, yeah, but it's obsolete, yeah.
Long time, two thousand and three.
People's comrades watching, pizza, a lot, we see a lot when we last flown on, but he's saying, he's saying, it looks like he, like, right. Mike Ellison's man.
Enough is enough, take it back.
Yes. Mike Ellison, take it back, man. People love you. Give him a shout out, man, yes. What up? First time I was coming, of course, any public traffic, the other day when Lagos, still we are, yeah, I can't, my spent like, today I watch the tunnel out there.
I can't imagine. Honestly, there was a day when I went to Nigeria, uh, from, uh, Sekungis in First Tag to Four, it's a stretch of maybe five kilometer. I spent four hours in it. I had to come down from the car and take Okada.
Yeah.
Uh, I let the driver to drive, come down from the car, took Okada to the bus stop and then took bus. I got to where I was going, the driver was still in the traffic. I was going to, towards the airport.
Wow, yeah, the other day I had to take, I had to take, this, to come to Australia.
Yeah.
I had to get out of the car and jump to like, Anokada to get to the airport.
Want me to drive you right here?
That's, that's.
Want me to drive you?
Yeah, you can drive, you can drive.
That's your work?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Wow, this hospital.
Yes.
Look at the hospital, my goodness, I always said, uh.
When my wife said you made it to the airport, I saw, I was thinking, how did you do it?
It was last minute. We were the last person to get on the aircraft. Last person to get a ticket, last person to get on the aircraft. Yeah, and they, they, they had told us that they're closing, but one guy just kept his computer open for us.
She, that was, uh.
That was something else.
That's something else.
Yeah, something else. Wow, we're at Saint's.
The P P A, Princess Alexandra.
Princess Alexandra Hospital, in, uh.
Wollongaba, yeah.
Wollongaba in Brisbane. So, you know, in fact, if you get here before you see a doctor, you'll be all right. Because the hospital environment alone is enough to make you start feeling well.
You wanna come down?
Yeah. We're just showing them, we're just showing around and this hospital here, mental health services. Like, you know, in case of people who have mental health issues, something that we kind of scandalize in Nigeria. Yeah, they take it serious. Because a lot of people have mental health issues and in Nigeria, we just can look for chain to chain them down instead of taking care of them and making sure that
Yeah, they have more rights.
Yeah.
They have more power here.
Yeah.
My wife would tell you.
Yeah, yeah. So somebody is saying, look hospital. Yeah, man, it's, it's, it's hospital, it's, there's.
Tomorrow, yeah, you can be, drive around tomorrow.
Yeah.
I was meant to collect, um, the pass from work, um, we can use for, they, they have this, there's for tourist city, tourist city cycle.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, so you just like, uh, then trick bicycle, you just drive around.
I'm gonna try to run as well tomorrow morning.
Okay. Yeah, they, in a, it's, oh, where we leave, or close where you'll be staying. Yeah, there'll be, like, a running route or something.
It will be better in the city.
I, I just like running to the city, as long as they have like walkways.
They have walkways, yeah.
Because I already can tell that this is, it's a very nice place to run. Just some three miles before I go to bed and wake up in the three miles.
Exercise is actually good for a productive mind.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it helps me a lot. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine, uh. We have to keep our people up to date with how the rest of the world is moving forward as we are moving backwards.
And like I keep saying, we, all we need to do in this day and age is just to copy. You don't really need to start.
Most of the things we need to copy, we don't even have to leave our houses before we copy them, you know. I'm sure the plan for this city is on the internet.
It's on the internet. If you Google the plan for this hospital, it's probably on, on the internet.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yesterday when I was at, uh, when we were in Dubai and I was looking at the airport, I'm, I'm sure the plan is somewhere you can obtain it.
Yeah.
Even if you can't build an airport as big as that, at least you can fix the one you have.
The one you have.
Yeah.
Murieta Mohammed Airport, I don't know if the A C is still working or.
Nothing is working, yeah, nothing. It's, it's very depressing.
Ordinary toilet. I don't know whether it takes rocket science for a toilet to be seen to be dirty and cleaned.
Somebody is saying that, uh, it seems like Buhari people and Attiku people have left Twitter, uh, it's Facebook for us.
Hmm.
So we should go to Twitter. So everybody go and create a Twitter account and fight the battle of ideas on Twitter as well. I urge you, create your own Twitter account, uh, and you can, uh, you can, let me, you can follow me, my Twitter account is Yalishuore. And our Twitter account for the campaign is Shurei twenty nineteen. I think we're doing a great job also on Instagram. And I want to shout out to Tunde Nott, uh, it's one of the celebrities on Instagram who's been very supportive.
Yeah.
A lot of these celebrities are still supporting the old system because of what they benefit from them.
True.
But they should know that if the country is better, if it's great, you will even be a better celebrity. But if you have no country, a celebrity can easily become a refugee in another country. And when the country goes down finally.
Or when a president is urging the citizens to live, if you don't like the country.
Yeah.
I don't know any president that would do that to citizens. He's lost it, maybe.
Yes, if you are not on Twitter, create a Twitter handle, it takes less than five minutes to do that. Uh, and go fight these guys, uh, we need new social media influencers on Twitter to start the battle of ideas. There's no big deal about those guys on Twitter who are sponsored and paid by Attiku and, uh, Buhari to be telling lies about articulation. There's nothing articulated. We need to deactivate all the articulated lies on Twitter. On Facebook, I think they've seen that we're too good for them on Facebook. They've led Facebook for us. But we need to go to Twitter as well, you know, occupy all the occupiables. There's nothing to hold off again, you know, we must take it back without looking back. All right, we're still in the city of Brisbane, Australia. Uh, it's Wednesday here, about, uh, eight, eh, eight, eh, eight oh eight, uh, A M. And I'm here with Michael. My fellow is, uh, very. I mean, this is after noon, five thirty here, it's spring. So, uh, and, uh, basically, I want you guys to all show up there, don't wait, uh, a long day, you know, the tough, but also some love to the freedom of Nigeria, uh, come, come and vote for us, come and support. And, uh, ensure that Nigeria starts to move like this starting from next year, not the way it is now. Don't vote for any analog brain leader who has been around for how many years, twenty years. There's no need for the country of Nigeria to govern by people who are, who are in Nigeria itself. You know, they will need to retire permanently, uh, and definitely this time, uh, doesn't matter whether it's Attiku or Buhari or any of those old guys, they are all the same, there's no difference between A P C or A D P. There's no difference between Attiku or Buhari, all of them are the same. They work for the, they do, they do the same things, they're doing the same things, have the same ideas, yeah, share the same ideas. And those are the kind of ideology that's talented, development, and growth of the year, and most of the time, uh. So, thank you so much and, uh, as we always do, we're taking you to the city of Brisbane. So that can inspire and motivate us, uh. You know, in a few years. Right leaders to govern the country, people who have exposure, uh, people who, uh, have integrity, people who've got capacity, and most importantly, people who are patriotic. Somebody said Buhari is watching, I'm sure. So Mr. President tried to visit villages in Nigeria. Of course, I just came from several villages if I came to Australia. We are everywhere, so you know that, just keep following us and when we are not in Nigeria, our friends and colleagues are visiting villages. We have some very tense news today, some of our taken backers, I mean, A C members in Delta had an accident. And, um, hoping that, uh, they are all fine. But if that one of their cars plunged into a river in Agbaro and three of them are still missing as we speak, we hope two of them have been found, two, three others are missing. We just hope they're okay. It's, uh, very sad, it's, it's a sad thing and, uh, uh, if you're out there, you know, campaigning or driving around in Nigeria, just be careful, check your tires. Don't travel when it's too late and make sure that, uh, the driver is, uh, you know, you know, has got a driver's license and is in his right senses when driving, all right? Yeah, it's very sad, very sad. So.
The hazards of Nigerian roads.
Yeah, the hazard of Nigerian roads. If our roads are like this, maybe it will reduce those kind of accidents to the barest minimum. Barest minimum, yeah. This is, this is, this is a, a tipper here to alert. This, if it's Nigeria, a tipper would, stones will be falling from the tipper. You know? We shouldn't have the kind of country we have now. In this age and time, I mean, this is, you know, year two thousand and eighteen and we're still like living as if we're in a stone age, it's very sad. Yeah, they said, when are we coming to Sydney? We're coming to Sydney, uh, those of you in Sydney, Saturday we'll be in Sydney, Saturday in Sydney.
Yeah, Saturday morning.
Okay, Saturday morning we'll be in Sydney, so start getting ready for us in Sydney. Yeah, those of you have been asking for our running mate to have, uh, announced, yes, Dr. Rafi, uh.
Wow, that's good. Really good running mate, man.
Yes, and he's a public health, uh, professional.
I was so happy to see.
You need to hear this guy speak, you know, we have asked him to actually reach out to our followers on, uh, on Facebook or, you know, issuing, uh, a video. He's probably working on it.
Yeah.
Very sound guy, you know?
His profile is wrong.
Yeah, it's amazing, amazing, uh, and this is to tell you that there are good Nigerians out there.
Yes, there are.
This guy is forty two years old, uh, or there about, yeah. So the age of the presidential candidate and the vice combined together is less than those of the two other candidates from P D P and A P C. Yeah, they're, they're competitive. So Dr. Rifa is, uh, is our running mate, yes. So he's on Twitter, I mean, he's on Facebook as well, I saw, I saw his Facebook page. And people are already correlating it, uh, it's, uh, you know, in fact, since, uh, the week started, it's been the biggest news. And nobody who read the news wasn't happy about it. That was interesting.
It was a very pleasant surprise.
Yes, yes. So it tells you that, uh, we are assembling some of, uh, the best brains in the country to run Nigeria starting from next year. Some of the best, best brains, eh? Digital brains, not analog brains. Because when we did our research, uh, when we started this whole campaign eight months ago, asking Nigerians what they want the most in terms of what they want from them, man. It's, it's health, health is not their number one priority.
And you know why? Because if you have your health, you can have the world.
Yes, you can have, with health, yeah. So, so it makes sense that, uh, our VP pick is, uh, a public health professional.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, Mr. Blessing.
And he's worked in one of the most difficult hospitals in the north.
Really, okay.
Yeah, Viro University, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Odion is driving, that's why I pick up his phone, yeah, this is his wife, we are with Shurei now. Yeah. You want to.
So while out here, I'm going to obtain a new telephone number and I'll let you have it, uh, as soon as it's activated, it's here. Amazing, amazing, amazing. That's uh, that's uh, that's gonna be my, we get my. So you can be calling while we're driving and they talk to us. We've been driving close to an hour now, no traffic. No police checkpoints.
The person you are calling is not available. Please leave a short message.
That's Nigeria for you. If you're traveling on Lagos, Bene Expressway, but. The checkpoints are, I don't know, maybe almost every five kilometers?
So is that city for a UK? Uh, no.
No.
We are in Australia, Australia.
Brisbane.
We're in Brisbane, Australia. For those who want to find out about trivia, Australia is the smallest uh, continent in the world, I think. Uh, but one state here, Queensland, is bigger than Nigeria.
Bigger than Nigeria.
Yeah, yeah. So, and you can imagine, it's bigger than Nigeria, it's got like great infrastructure. This, I think there's another airport here.
There is a mini airport.
Archfield, that's, that's where, yeah. I mean, sorry, airport here.
Oh, we're thinking if you could, you want to go on a chopper?
Oh, why not? We can do that. Is that tomorrow or today?
It's tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it. Oh, I would love that. So I can uh, will you let me livestream? From the air?
I think they will.
Yeah, yeah, I would do that. I would gladly take a chopper around the city of Brisbane. No, that can, yeah, it's, I do this all the time. Like I said, we are beautiful days.
Hey, you can do it here, posting in the morning. I'll sort all that out when I can.
Okay.
Michael, just check your, my phone for your school number. I need to call Mrs., what's her name now? What's the lady in the front desk?
So they tell him he's not coming, right?
Now they will be calling me soon.
If our police come and get you for not sending your child to school.
We can't find your son in school.
Yeah, that's the way it should be. It's one of the things that I said. The moment we're able to take all the kids out of the streets by putting them in school. It will become a criminal offense for parents to ask the children to hug instead of going to school.
Yeah, true.
Yeah. So if we don't see your child in school.
We'll ring the parents.
We'll ring the parents. If we, if we don't, if we can't find you, the police will come and get you for not sending your child to school. I don't send my daughter and son to school. Again, they'll come to the house, they'll come look for you. It's like, sir, can we find out why your kids haven't been to school in two days? In fact, the first day they will start calling you, they don't, you know, investing in the future of these kids, you can't afford to keep them in the house selling.
I had a sport competition yesterday.
Wow. Wow, the goal of Queensland, Michael, hundred meters.
We're in the same boat, in the same boat.
Yeah, Nigeria. Yeah, they'll be running for Nigeria. That's the first one. You'll be fine.
You'll be fine.
You'll be healing and then you'll be back. Wow, maybe if he didn't hurt his leg for the first time, he would have won the second one too. Don't worry, Michael, you're gonna win.
When show is there, you win.
Win. A lot of people are gonna be winning competitions all over the world, but yeah, we had uh, uh, a person in South Africa too. Who, lady who brought us to South Africa, though, is uh, very, very, so, yes. His daughter is one of the best runners in South Africa, and she's only five, just say, look, I cannot. She doesn't want to go to Africa anymore. This is so weird. Believe me, with that, please, just hang on two thousand and fifteen. You have a country. Right, yes. So. South uh, of Brisbane now, yeah, and it is the airport, they want to act, or I was, or I was. On light planes and helicopters, yeah?
This place we are going to, we just moved in there.
Okay.
Oh, there's one lady who has been really mean to see you.
Yeah, oh wow, so we'll see her today, possibly if she's still on.
Sandra.
Oh, okay.
Since I'm watching you guys, my Facebook Live.
Wow.
Special greeting to Shure.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you so much. I will see you soon.
Yes, and that's the entrance of the airport.
Okay, wow.
Quite a lot of different company owns the airlines.
Okay, then, so they come on.
They come on. You see, the planes will be parked here, small planes here.
That's great, too.
The Americans use here as well. They, they had their fighter jet.
Wow, yeah.
Land here and take off.
Wow.
Long journey.
Yeah, it's about eleven uh, it's about eleven twenty five now, Nigeria.
P M.
Almost, yeah, almost midnight, yeah.
Three hours close this.
Okay.
Yeah. Almost eleven thirty.
P M.
In Nigeria, yeah.
On Tuesday night.
Um, Tuesday night, yeah.
Yes.
Generally, when we wake up in the morning here, they are back going to bed there. And when we're running up our day, they are waking up.
Yes. In the U S, I mean, I think we're like.
U S?
U S now. It's like seven, something, yeah.
P M.
Yeah.
P M.
Yes.
Cause I tried.
No, U S is, no, no. U S is about afternoon, yeah, it's alright.
Cause I tried calling Malcolm yesterday, I checked the time, it was about.
Yeah, U S is uh, it's in the afternoon now. It's probably like five P M.
P M.
In the U S.
How is Malcolm? Is this in the U S or?
It's in the U S, yes, Malcolm, I did, it's in the U S. He just came back from Nigeria after the convention we had.
A lot of people fall in love with him talking, when you got to have it.
The interview with uh, yeah. Look at Baty. He's a brilliant guy. He uh, he went from University of Lagos as an undergraduate, after finishing his undergraduate degree.
Yeah.
To do a P H D at Cambridge.
Wow.
Yes, a chemical engineer. He finished in three years. Then went back after that, after he found, you know, then. Another, I think he did an M B A in another school.
Hmm.
Super, super brand, uh, that. And when you see those kind of young people, you know that uh.
And the reason they're never going back to Nigeria is because.
They can't, Nigeria cannot accommodate their level of exposure and intellect.
What's his name?
Who's that?
Mega Comrade, yes. Mega Comrade, if you are watching, you are loved all over the world here.
Oh, he's a star.
Mega Comrade is a star. He's in, he's based in Dallas. It's probably, his time is uh, probably around three P M now, their time, yeah.
I have to really call him a half doggy.
He's our star too, you know. Mega, it's mega. He says five twenty seven P M in Canada. Okay, maybe we should do a little competition. Tell us what time it is wherever you are.
Exactly.
Tell us what time it is wherever you.